Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Do- Mo Toyo Mas. Councilmember Eric Contreras is absent. Councilmember Sean Gillian present. Councilmember Greg Rennebaum present. Councilmember Leah Young present. Councilmember Nathan Kremble present.
Thank you. At this time, would you all rise? And Pastor Ted, would you leave us an invocation?
Lord, we are appreciated by this community. So let's pray. Well, Father, I thank you for the privilege of serving people as your son did so faithfully and effectively. Lord, I pray this evening for wisdom for each of these councilmen and women, wisdom in their decision making for this community. I pray for peace amongst them and a sense of good friendship and camaraderie. I hope that they have that. Lord, I pray that tonight's productive, that the goal set for this evening's meeting would be accomplished and accomplished at appropriate time. And when each of these councilmen and women leave this building, they feel a sense of your good favor, that you've done a good work for the people of Willow Park. We ask this in the name of the sovereign kingdom, the perfect magistrate of our Lord Jesus.
Amen.
Please repeat with me the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ted. Pray for Tampa. That's our old hometown. They're about to get hammered. We evacuated four times one week up there. Never got hit, but pray for them. All right, thanks, everyone. Item number one is to approve the city council meeting minutes, September thirteenth, 2022. Do we have a motion, please?
Take a motion. We accept the minutes from our past meeting, September thirteenth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? All in favor? That's okay. Just to make sure he's listening there. Thank you. Item number two, setting the date, time, and location of regular city council meetings for the Willow Park City Council. Mr. Grimes.
Yes. At the request of Councilman Contreras and some others, we are recommending that we keep the council meeting on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, but we move the time up one hour to 6:00 PM. And of course, all council meetings will still be located here at City Hall unless it's necessary to move it to another location. Pat, you want to go through?
Well, tonight, if you desire to move the time, you can just move to set the next meetings for six o'clock or whatever time you desire, and then we'll need to put on the next agenda to bring back our ordinance. We passed an ordinance back in nineteen that had the time and place, and it has the time in there, so we'll need to amend that if you want to do this permanently.
When you add, when you all decided to add that second meeting?
Yes.
Would you advise us to take that time out of the ordinance, so you have flexibility?
You know, I would. I think the time is not as important as the day.
Okay, we have a, do we have someone to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to set the date and location the same as they are now, change the time to 6:00 PM.
And then to amend the ordinance?
I'm sorry?
And to amend the ordinance.
And to amend the ordinance and leave the time out of the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Somebody's phone's ringing. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider and act on approving holiday schedule for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mr. Grimes.
In front of you or in your packet, you have a list of all the holiday schedules. This is following the same schedule as last year. There is one additional in there, which is the Juneteenth holiday. I believe the county receives that. I think the state recognizes it as well. We're adding it, but everything else will remain the same.
Okay, do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the 2022, 23 calendar with the addition of Juneteenth.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, to consider and act on designating the official newspaper of the city of Willow Park for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. I seem like we just did that.
It does feel like we just did it.
We have them, go ahead, Mr. Grimes.
Our staff is recommending that we retain the community news as the official newspaper of record for the city of Willow Park.
Do we have a motion?
I move to retain the community news as the official newspaper of record for the city of Willow Park.
And a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Gosh, why can't they all be like this? Item number five, to approve a resolution appointing a voting member and alternate to the wholesale water and wastewater customer advisory committee. Is that you, Mr. Grimes?
Yes. Unless one of you fine distinguished elected officials would like to go sit down with the city of Fort Worth periodically and discuss the water system.
I'll pass.
No takers? Wow, okay. Yes, it would be, the voting member would be myself, and I think Michelle is the alternate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion?
There's a suggested motion in your council packet.
Oh, was there?
I move to approve a resolution appointing Brian Grimes as the voting member and Michelle Gelker as the alternate to the wholesale water and wastewater customer advisory committee.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Sean or Greg?
Give it to Greg.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
I didn't want Michelle to.
Presentation from Eric. Eric, you've got two minutes.
We have debt?
We was going along pretty good there, Eric.
Thanks, sir.
That was all to give him extra time.
I'll work through it and then start helping along the way.
You're good.
Dang, I didn't bring my glasses today.
Thank you, sir. Eric, can you give Ms. Hannah?
Suck up.
Well, good evening, mayor, council. Nice item, discussion item, and we have a packet of information, and it's fairly comprehensive, information on the city, its debt, and some projections, and then just general information on credit, and then some sample schedules that we've put together. So, like I said, feel free to stop along the way if there's any items to highlight or detail through. Happy to do that, but if you'd like, we can start maybe on page three.
No. There it is.
Page three, we go back to 2013, ten-year history of the city of Willow Park's assessed valuation, and this is one of the key components. Anytime we run analysis on tax impact going forward, what certain bond issue sizes would do to the tax rate, we like to look historically what the tax base has done, and you all certainly see this firsthand day to day. But going forward in the gray, we've assumed one and a half percent growth in the schedules in an attempt to be conservative. You can see the five-year and the ten-year averages here on the bottom, but we do have the ability, anytime we do run schedules, to adjust those growth rates as needed. We can run a moderate, a conservative, a baseline growth scenario. But for the analysis you'll see tonight, this evening, we've assumed one and a half percent growth on the AB going forward.
So we've seen 133% growth over ten years?
Yes, sir. Commercial, residential, what have you, all of itself. Certainly feeds into rating discussion. Well, page four, we've gone back, same time period added a few more years, back to 2013, the N and O and the INS actuary history. You can see that. Really nothing to report there, just more informational stuff for the council. Page five, quite a few numbers on page five, this is something we need to keep a close eye on. This is an aggregate schedule of all of the city's aggregate debt, all the bonds and so on. Columns M, N, and O on the far right, those are the total principal and interest payments going out into the future for all the debt. And then to the left in the various colors, we've separated out the city's debt from repayment source. So you may recall from past discussions, the city supports a portion from water revenues, a portion from sewer. Recently, there was a CO issued that supported from drainage revenues. So we're able to carve out of the city's debt how much is supported by which revenue source. And then columns J, K, and L, maybe pertinent for tonight's discussion, those are the amounts supported from INS or property taxes. All of the bonds and certificates that the city has, at the end of the day, you have pledged your tax base to repay those, but you have the ability to pay them from other sources. And so that's, and by doing that, you've been able to borrow at the lower interest rate because you've given the tax pledge to all the debt currently. One thing I wanted to point out, it might be hard to really call them an L, that that's the debt supported by INS, this is principal and interest. And you'll notice there's a drop from 2026 to 2027, and that becomes important as we look at future capacity. 1.877 million in 2026, and you'll see in 2027, the drop in column L, about a million five, million oh five, so. That's the point when there becomes capacity on the INS side. Page six, we've taken the value assumptions that we looked at on page three, and then the debt supported by INS on prior page, and we've come to what would be the city's tax rate with no new debt. If values were to grow one and a half percent each year, this is more of a what-if scenario on page six, and you can see the projected tax rate column. Currently, the recent tax rate, 25 cents, next year, 23 cents, 23, 23, and then again in '27, fiscal '27, and we see that drop in INS tax rate. If there's no new debt issued, about the 11, about 11 cent drop starting in 2027 based on these assumptions. And again, if values outgrow projections, that drop would be greater, so.
And you ran the estimate at 1.5%?
Yes, sir. And you know, if values exceed that in the early years, it has that compounding effect. So if next year they exceed that one and a half, it's going to make these numbers look better throughout the time, so.
You called the 1.5 a conservative. What would be our, like a standard rate if you're trying to hit it right on the, right on the nose?
You know, it's something that we typically, we like to make when you get your April pre-estimates, is a good time to maybe sit down and do that, because sometimes we can look at neighborhoods that are being built out, how many homes, prices, things like that. It's hard to look historically, I would say, for someone like you all in Willow Park because of the commercial growth that you've experienced, and that's certainly why you've grown over 133% over the last few years. There could, there'd need to be a full discussion with staff on what developments are coming and what you're expecting to really get close, I think, this time. Now, if you were just a residential community, I think we could do a better job of kind of finding an average, because with the commercial layered in it, it's going to make a little trickier, because you may have one or two commercial communities come in that really do some effects.
Sure.
We could probably do an average on the residential side to help layer commercial on top of it, so.
Okay.
Just, if I can add on real quick, Parker County does their appraisals differently. They'll do a big appraisal in, I want to say odd numbered years. Yeah, excuse me, odd numbered years, they'll do like a massive appraisal, I guess is the best way to put it, and then their even numbered years is more, is less. For example, in 20, from 20 to 21, we saw an 11% jump in taxable value. Then from 21 to 22, we saw a 5% jump in taxable value. And they'll do this every other year. It's a methodology that, you know, is probably unique to Parker County. But what that is, your values next year will probably go 10% higher than what they are now. Your values will, in two years, will probably go about 5% higher than next year's.
Sure, okay.
That's value, but then there's growth as well, so.
There's value, and then there's growth, exactly. So we saw $14 million of new value this year that's not on that, plus the 11% increase. You know, the tax, the appraisal district indicated to us back in August, when we were doing the tax rates, that, you know, they are seeing 40% increases. We're already 40% behind in Parker County. Now, that number may have cooled off with interest rates going up and maybe values have stabilized somewhat, but I would expect a 10% growth in the next year would be, would be a good number. But I understand where he's coming from. He's going to give us the most conservative number.
Yeah.
We'll maybe do a 5% growth for two years, 4% three, and then taper down is often how we see it when you're trying to be a little more aggressive. Like I said, when we run numbers, we can do different scenarios, you know, scenario A at these values, scenario A at these values, and look at it that way, so.
Okay.
But it's something, a lot of times in April, when you get your pre-certified, it's a good time to sit down and really project out what you think of that. So, just wanted to point out that debt drop, certainly how that would affect the tax rate. The next section, we have a summary page on page eight, as I mentioned, the analysis here this evening. Just to put some numbers on paper, we looked at 2 million, if the city were to fund 2 million up to 5 million in 1 million increments with different repayment terms. Historically, you all have done different repayment terms. If this were for streets or roads, you know, we could go 15, 20-year, is possible depending on life of those roads planned. And so on the summary page, schedules one through eight, we've labeled it, you know, the 2 million, 3 million, 4, 5 different terms. And when you see it says leveled debt, that means each payment each year is leveled from year to year. And then below it, we ran an alternate scenario. We call it the wrap scenario to where we wrap around that debt, that increased debt, and when it drops in '27, we fill in. So there's some deferral of payments for the next three, four years. That drops off, that's when the amortization on, on page eight is being assumed on the wrap scenario. So we, basically two different payment structures, leveling of payments or wrap around existing. And with the wrap, you'll notice it pulls down the tax rate in those first three, four years, because you're not paying double principal, if you will. So you save a little bit on the tax rate in the earlier years. What we noticed with these value assumptions, all of the wraps scenarios more or less are about even in terms of tax rate. We even often check the tax rate increase needed to support these amounts with that wrap structure. Now, if we were to do leveled debt, you'd amortize principal quicker, but there'd be a moderate tax rate, one, two, three pennies in that case. And then again, it values outgrowth projections. It could be a possible way of lowering the tax rate, maintaining it or adding capacity.
So we've got about 20, what, 22 to 25 million dollars of road rebuilding to do in this city, even after what we started this year?
I would, yeah, that's probably a good number.
Yeah, so.
I was going to say, that was last month's agenda item. I don't have that.
But still, I mean, when you look at it in this context, I mean, this just goes to point out, if we had that Robin Hood sales tax money pumped back into the city, we could really make that, fix those problems much faster. So I'll get off my soapbox about that, but, you know, you know, we get no value from the county and no help, and they're taking all the benefit. So, I'm done.
No, that's a number we can run, you know, if it's an all-in, you know, for every road in the city, and we plug it in the model, and you can somewhat interpolate. If 5 million is no impact, then, you know, probably a couple pennies to 20 million in that case.
I mean, we look, you know, I don't know if you have, what is our projections for sales tax? Do we have any of that that we could?
They've been very strong, and the good thing here is, we're not assuming any sales tax for these. So to the extent the city wanted to contribute some of that sales tax, that would net down the INS tax rate in this case.
I think we owe it to the citizens of this city as to what would happen if we had that sales tax revenue back in the city to pay for these roads and what the impact is on their tax rate that they're paying on their house and the businesses they're paying.
You know, that's the analysis we could run. If the number's 20 million, we could look at what would be the tax impact, and then what would it take sales tax-wise to get the tax rate unchanged in that case, and so.
Yeah, yeah, when you are able to do that, I would love to see that.
Yeah, we can run numbers, so let us know. I'll make some notes here, call it Brian, some of these, we'll look at maybe a more aggressive growth for the first few years, because we do know, I think, one and a half is pretty conservative for you all the next couple of years. We'll look at that, and then we'll look 20 million, is that the number that?
Well, what do we say, Squaw Creek alone is going to be, what, 18?
10.
10.
10, mm-hmm. By the time we actually did, it's probably going to be closer to 12. No. Yeah, they ain't put the water. Just looking at this, I mean, not to belabor the point, but if you're looking at 5 million of construction proceeds, and I'm looking at a different schedule that he has, you know, you're looking at a total debt service of the max amount is roughly $430,000. If the city was to get an extra half cent either from a county election or the legislature gave us an extra half cent, you could pay for $5 million of road construction and pay for it exclusively with sales tax and not, it wouldn't impact the tax rate at all.
I mean, we're just, you know.
I know, but that's a discussion for another day.
Yeah.
Eric, continue.
You certainly have options, so that's, hopefully this analysis is like the first blush, so if you all think, or let us know, and we'll run the numbers. Page nine, just more of a reference piece on page nine. For every penny in impact, you can see the impact annually and monthly on the various home values listed. This is taxable value for homes, one cent up to 10 cents. For example, a $300,000 home, if the INS tax rate was raised 10 pennies, that's $300 a year in that case. So just as a reference piece, if you're looking at tax impacts. The next section starts on page 11. It would be helpful just to talk briefly about the city's credit rating on page 11. We have the, there are three main rating agencies. You all historically have been rated by Standard and Poor's on the right. You'll notice that red shaded, you all are AA currently with Standard and Poor's. The city was actually upgraded back in 2016, and then prior to the most recent certificate of obligation, the rating agency Standard and Poor's affirmed the AA rating back in July. So that's a good, solid rating on page 12. You'll notice there are key factors, if you will, and there are some overriding factors in these seven categories on page 12 that Standard and Poor's looks at. There's various ratios, as you can imagine, that they build into their analysis. And we have a copy of the report, I can email that out from July, but I know that was included in the fact that when we sold those certificates, but those are the key factors. You know, economy's the largest, you'll notice, and you all do very well in that section, given that your proximity to Fort Worth and the Metro Place, you get high marks for that. The block eat and some of the institutional presence, you get marks for that, and just with the value growth, you've done well on that area, you know, sales tax and budget. General funds been strong, reserves been strong, so all that feeds into that AA rating.
Did the economy include salaries?
Medium household income is factored into the analysis. There are a few ratios that Standard and Poor's uses on that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
That uses the medium household income. Page 13, kind of a different way to look at it. You can see the number affects the cities in each of the categories by each of the rating agencies. So again, Willow Park, in the top tier in terms of rating. And this, you know, goes into the, when we price bonds or certificates, that investors are looking at this bond rating to make decisions, and higher the rating, the lower the interest rate. You all, you've been able to access financial markets, no concern with that bond rating, so. Page 14, I won't go through this in full detail, but just apologize if it looks like some of the hands got cut off on the left-hand side. You can see, these are some of the peer cities. I know we've used this comparison over the years, and again, if there's other cities that you all like to look, let us know, we'll add those in, but debt burden on the far right, debt per capita, assessed value per capita, general fund balance, things like that, just various debt points. And you can also see the ratings for each of them, and it's listed as well. The next section, I would call it more of a bonds 101, and I can, in the state of Texas, page 16, 17, and 18, we talked about some of the debt instruments Texas cities have access to. Your two key are your GO bonds, which must be voted by the public either May or November, and then we have certificate of obligation, which you all have issued in the past, both supported by the property tax base. It's just the mechanism on how the debt instruments are issued. So with GO bonds, we included, take 20, a sample calendar. If there is a decision to do some road projects, let's say in fiscal '23, the decision also has been made to go voters or to be issued certificates. If the decision is made to go to voters, and it needs to be on the May ballot, there's a window for Texas cities to put that measure on the ballot. That window for May of '23 is between February 5th and February 7th. So any decisions to go to voters in May, the amount and the projects and so on, it has to be under the pipe within that window by that time. And then, of course, certificates are also against the obligation, you can issue those at any point during the year, and so you have more flexibility on timing. And the analysis that we showed here, the details can I think, say, we've assumed a summer issuance next summer. These certificates would be issued sometime next summer, let's say, and then the first payment would be in fiscal '24. So issuance could occur, and then next year, the city could set a tax rate next July, August, and then make payments in fiscal '24.
If we did the issuance after February, would we have an August payment?
We could defer an August payment, we'll not have one in August. Investors typically like to see that first payment within a year or so.
Okay.
And we can push that in some cases, but no, we wouldn't need an August payment in that case.
If we did, I guess the earliest we could actually do something would be in January.
Yes, sir.
If we notice, just hypothetically, we did notice in November, 45 days, we issue in January, we sell in February, we're not seeing the payment until February 24.
Yes, sir. That's right. And one thing I did, just highlighted, but I thought I'd highlight it again, on the GO bond. bonds, if the measure is taken voters and the voters do not approve it, you're locked out for three years on that project. That's something always, there's, I always like to say that, when it comes to roads, if voters don't approve it, then you're somewhat scratched in that case. You have to be very careful on how you write a proposition. I did go through that fairly quickly. Appendix A, these are the detailed schedules, the 2, the 5 million. This shows the detail of the existing debt, which we looked at earlier, and then the debt structure. The column H in each of the schedules would be the principal infrastructure, being this room. And again, we have the ability to run different amounts, sizes, terms. Use the sales tax if that's desired with the growth rates. It's a very flexible model that we have. And then one thing on interest rates, we're trying to be conservative here. We don't know what rates we'll be doing tomorrow, but more or less next year. So we've added about 1% to current rates in this analysis. And, you know, it's been a pretty messy few months here in our market, getting more and more creases gone, but hopefully we see some stabilization. I think we're back, if you look historically, we were pretty poor for a number of years, I would say, in our market with so slim rates. And you all certainly benefited from that the last five years with your debt issues, but we're trying to manage expectations going forward. We're not available to bar at those rates.
What did we close at on the drainage, the decisions we just did? Three, just...
About 3%. Right at 3%?
Yeah, right at 3%.
I don't have those numbers with me, but, yeah, I believe it was right at 3. I did see one, you all did, it was around the 240 mark, so we're running it at 413. That's all rates in all markets.
Sure.
Awesome, thank you for the presentation. If I can, I flip back to Schedule A and say that's obviously the lowest impact would be a wraparound 5 million 20-year, so the lowest impact to tax rate, and see that even over the next, with the 5 million issuance, even over the next three to four years before the debt cliff, we'd have a drop. We are not looking at, and that's with a conservative, very conservative one and a half, so we're comfortable. I'm going to say the reason I requested it is we expect higher than what we thought...
On the road.
...bids for our road package next month, and we have the ability to get, to issue more debt to cover what we've gone out for bids for, if we so desire, so.
Yes.
We show 5 million can be supported with little to no taxes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All that awesome discussion to get to that answer, which is... But I love the discussion.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, if you had sales tax.
Item number seven, to consider an act on approving a school resource officer agreement between the City of Willow Park and Trinity Christian Academy.
Chief West.
Chief West.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We met with members of TCA shortly before school started, and they expressed a great interest in partnering with us for a school resource officer on their campus. We agreed we would start with one position, so this position would add one full-time employee to the police department staff, but at only a 30% cost to the city, and that number was agreed upon by TCA as well as our staff to accommodate the position. They are, they will remain a Willow Park employee, they will not be an employee at TCA, and so when they're not performing their SRO duties, they will be assigned as needed.
Is that something, we've already hired this person, we have this person?
No, we have not hired in advance, however, as luck would have it, one of our recent new hires is trained as a school resource officer. We acquired her from another agency within the last few months, and she is excited and prepared to assume that duty.
Very good.
So we would have to backfill her position if this is true.
Okay. Do we have a motion or any questions for Carrie?
I just go, when I read through it, I noticed you did cross out your Ts and dot your Is. They are well aware, anything after that eight hours, they're paying the standard $45 for somebody to stand there right with the beds and things.
Her duties do not include football games and such. That would be separate from her SRO duty.
Would it be overtime to the city, or is it just a separate subcontract?
It would be something that, it would be something that they would pay for directly as they're doing now when we work football games. There is, I believe it's $3,300 built into that cost of that officer in overtime, so she has something that she has to stay late at school for.
Right, regular duties.
Any issue that arises during that time.
It's not extra for regular.
No, that's included, that's all separate.
No, it looks real good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept that contract on that 30/70 split with TCA to provide an SRO for the years.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Carrie. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is anticipated that all or a portion of the discussion of the foregoing item will be conducted in a closed executive session under authority of the Section 551 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. However, no action will be taken on this item until the city council reconvenes an open session. Item eight, Section 551 dot 072, discussing the purchase, exchange, sale, lease, or value of real property, 101 Stagecoach Trail, 516 Rancho Road. And item number nine, Section 551 dot 074, Personnel Matters, City Secretary Review. Could we clear the chambers, please? We're coming out of executive session at 7:30 PM. We have a motion to act on personnel matters. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we increase the city secretary's salary 5%.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other... I'm sorry, Sean?
Sorry. I know, it's sad.
Thank you. October 1.
October 1, effective October 1.
Effective, we have a motion on the 5% for the city secretary. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Mayor comments this morning. Leah, Tony, and I went to visit with the mayors, and Larry on the trail, we had a great meeting, some excitement there on everything that's going, and I'd like to mention our food drive, mayor's food drive kicks off, is Monday the first?
Saturday is the first.
Saturday is the first. It kicks off Saturday. The mayor's food drive goes through the month of October, so appreciate everyone's involvement and help with that. That's all I have. Mr. Grimes.
Awesome. City staff will be attending the TML conference next week. We will head out on Wednesday, we will be back on Friday. Just a couple of notes, that's going to make the agenda for the 11th. We'll try to have a preliminary for you on that Tuesday with a final on that Friday, I think.
I'll have a prelim out on the 4th, October 4th, so next Tuesday.
We don't have, moving on to the agendas, we don't, we have the Freedom House proclamation, and we have the dispatch agreement from the SO that was going to take effect October 1st, but we received it yesterday.
It had a date stamped on it for the postal service for September 22nd, so that was Friday, Thursday, Friday?
And it was addressed to Mayor Glasgow.
Wow, that's current.
Yeah.
So, we will, we will take care of that on October the 11th.
Okay. Everyone have a great trip at TML. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second.
We're about to go make copies. We have a second. All in favor, thank you.